Welcome, everyone. This is the planning board meeting of October 7th. We are going to be, we are having a hybrid meeting. Actually, all of us are attendants for the planning board, but this is also being broadcast via Zoom. So if you are going on Zoom making your comments, please note that if we can see your background, everyone else in the world can see your background as well. So please take that into account. And if we are going to ask for anyone to speak online, if you do, you have to state your name and address, and then we'll continue from there. For the first thing up, take a roll call. Adam Block.
Present.
Eric.
Present.
Natasha.
Present.
Justin.
Present.
And the chair already is present. So the first item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for the 100 West 110 West Street project. So I ask for the applicants to please come up to the table. So I know, Tim, you're here. Were you Tim Sullivan?
Tim Sullivan.
Tim, I'm sorry, Tim Sullivan. Okay.
Tim Sullivan.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Yeah. And I'm sorry, you are?
Zach Richards of Bowler.
Zach, okay.
Landscape architecture.
Got it. Okay. Okay. So why don't you, why don't you tell us where you are at this point, what you've been doing?
Okay, if I share, Alex?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Great. Okay, so Tim Sullivan, Gulston and Storres, for the record. So we're here with the same project team, Gray Star. Cube 3 is the architect, Bowler is the site civil, MDM's transportation. So we really, you know, at the last meeting, I think everyone's familiar with the site, which is going to come up, there we go, the existing conditions at 100 West, the site across from the Trader Joe's. Last time, we talked about the site, we talked about the proposed site plan, which is 189 units, three stories, open space. At the last meeting, we also talked a bit about the community process that led to zoning, you know, the public meetings, the public engagement, the charrettes, the public hearings, the two-town meetings, all of which reflected zoning that we submitted a plan compliant with for as of right. So the plan we talked about last time is three stories, it's 189 units, the FAR is one, just under 1-1, preserves existing curb cuts, it has the open space next to the residential that we talked about, 12.5% affordable, all of that. So the plan we presented last week reflected informal feedback from this board when we met in July, design review comments that we got at the beginning of September. At the last meeting, before the last meeting, since the last meeting, we received comments from the board, from members of the public. So last week, we submitted a response memo, and we addressed the comments that we heard. We tried to address some of what I'll say, the more common topics, so the parking, the rodent control, that sort of thing, but we did in an appendix address all of the comments we received. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to meet with Tom Ryder and engineering and DPW. We talked about a few more things that, so what our plan is tonight is to kind of hit the high-level stuff. So we'll talk about the parking. One of the things that came up yesterday was could we make the sidewalk a little bit wider for bike lanes? We actually have the plans tonight with those revisions incorporated, we can flip through. So Tim will go through that. I'll touch a little bit on the criteria at the end, and then we're here for questions. So shorter presentation, but we're just trying to hit the responses to the comments we had. So we'll start with parking, and I'll pass over to Tim.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. First of all, thank you, planning board, the public, for all your comments. We appreciate them. And thank you for having us back. We're really excited to be here. So last time we were here, from a parking perspective, we were looking for a waiver on two things, the interior landscaping and a waiver on three parking spots. We have a new alternative that we think is a great solution that will accommodate the 189 spots that will get us to the one-to-one parking ratio. And that would be removing the interior islands within our current plan. So we would be able to get the 189 parking spaces, maintain the courtyard for future residents, the green space, all of that good stuff. The other piece of this is I kind of just wanted to walk through some of the math that we talked about last time. I think there's some things that I didn't explain well, to be completely candid, right? So in the new, I shouldn't say new plan, but a different plan, right? It would be the 189 spaces, right? These, like we discussed last time, these buildings operate at a 80 to 90%, a .8 or .9 utilization ratio, right? So taking the high end, that would be 170 resident parking spaces, right? And we discussed the amount of employees that we're going to be having, right? And so there's, like we discussed, three in, three out, that's three leasing professionals, three maintenance, right? And across our portfolio, we typically see two of them live within the building. So their two parking spaces are included in that residential parking and the utilization that we typically calculate for our portfolio. So that would leave us with the four additional spaces for staff that are commuting to the site. So that would put us at about 174 spaces, and leaving in excess of 15, and then those four that are commuting, they work typical business hours, they will not be there overnight or on weekends. So let's call it on off-hours or weekend hours, we would have an additional 19 spaces for overflow or guest parking as, you know, we were, there was a lot of questions around it last time. On a typical day or any given day, we see a request for guest parking in the three to five space range on a daily basis, right? And how we monitor that is, in order to have a guest park in our parking spaces, the resident would need to come to the leasing office and register that parking space so that we know that they are parking in there, they get a flyer or something to indicate that they are a guest, and, you know, the dates that they will be staying, right? So it's not like a, a guest can come and park for six weeks or whatever it may be, right? With all that being said, I, we want to re, or I want, I would like to reiterate that we think this is a great solution to get as many spaces on the site as we can, which is the 189, which is the one-to-one ratio, while also maintaining the green space and the courtyard for future residents, which we think is a great use.
Yes, so just one thing to note there is the waiver we're requesting, the requirement's 10% of open space, we're still hitting that. It's just the interior. So we're still getting to, I think, 11%.
Yeah, so it's all-
We're still over the open space requirement. So it's just on the interior islands.
Yeah, so it was 11%.
Could you show the islands you're thinking for the parking? Could you just show, show where you're, what you're talking to remove, please?
Yep. So the islands that are indicated by the green circles, but that's what we're looking to remove, and that's reflected, and we'll show it, we'll show an updated plan at the end that reflects that.
Rodent control?
Yeah, so the next thing was rodent control. First, let me, you know, we hear, we hear everyone, we hear the concerns. We are materially aligned with the town, the public, everyone with mitigating rodent issues. You know, Gray Star across all of our projects implements a very high standard of rodent mitigation. So the first thing we do on all projects is we engage a licensed subcontractor that will work with us through the duration of the construction. They are the ones who will maintain our bait boxes, well, pick the locations of the bait boxes, identify potential areas that may be issues, and maintain those, you know, replenish them throughout the term of the project, right? And then there's also things that our construction team does on a daily basis, right? And one of them, obviously, food is a big attraction, right? We dedicate one area to where subcontractors are allowed to eat. This is important because you don't want food all over your site. That's where issues start to arise. So we dedicate a certain area with certain bins that are dedicated for just food that are emptied on a daily basis. We also will have daily cleaning, right? We don't want to leave wood, cardboard, anything around that could potentially become a nest. We will have rodent-resistant dumpsters, garbage bins wherever we can. So again, we hear you. There's a few other things up here, right? Weekly inspections, anything that we can do to prevent any rodent mitigation or rodent issues, we are also tierally aligned to do that. Then the next one is deliveries. We are going to have them go to the back of the building. We will work with our, you know, delivery operators, vendors, to ensure that they are going to the back of the building. We will also put signage on the front of our building to make sure that anyone who is delivering, they see that we prefer that it goes to the back of the building. So we understand, you know, the potential issues, we are happy to accommodate that.
Would you go back to that picture for just a second, the one you just had?
Deliveries?
Yeah, just back for a second. It's really, the question is related to, so where is the, where is the entrance into the building from the, I know you're talking about Highland Avenue entrance, but in the back of the building, where is the entrance?
Right, right. The red dot is our loading area.
Is the entrance?
Yep.
So in front of that red dot, there's no parking right there?
Nope, there's like a, it's kind of, yeah.
And there's a ramp for, ramp, okay.
Yeah, yep. That's our, that's our dedicated loading area. Thank you. Yeah, and so the last piece that we wanted to discuss, and we had a really great meeting with DPW yesterday, we are going to upgrade all of the sidewalks along Highland Avenue, which obviously benefits both of us, but that also includes a one-foot easement. In the right-of-way, essentially, we're going to add a side, you know, one foot of sidewalk into our site, which is going to allow for the traffic improvement plan, the bike lane, everything that, we don't, we would like to avoid the town having to rework, and ourselves to redo anything, rework.
Just for people who are, we learned yesterday that in this area here, there's a bike lane, and the right-of-way isn't fully utilized, there's like a foot left, and then another foot beyond that will be into the site.
The mic just-
Oh, yeah, the mic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure. So on the plan, there's a foot of right-of-way that's not used. We're going to use that plus give a foot into our site of sidewalk.
Yeah, so this, this right here is just, and Zach can speak to some of the more technical stuff on the civil side, but we wanted to show the plan that essentially has all the updates in response to comments, right? So some of the things that are shown here, this is the 189 parking spaces, the one-foot easement that we just discussed, there's sewer connection to manholes. I don't speak too much civil, but-
Maybe easier to roll the plan out.
Oh, yeah, we can also do that as well.
Sure, yeah, and I can just hit on it really quick. Again, really good meeting, I think a lot of good questions, some feedback. Some of those things are going to be longer-term, just coordination, and we had a good discussion, understanding, hey, you know, heading up to a building permit. I think the, the traffic improvement plan, for example, that incorporates the bike lanes at a 10% level, there's going to be a number of iterations ahead. Under that, that's what they're proposing, the RRFB through that as well, and coordinating, you know, with, with that design team, where that's, you know, ultimately located, so it makes sense with our project and design.
Just, sorry, just quickly on that point, it's not shown on this plan. It's actually a little bit to the left of where the our site ends. That's why, that's why it's not included, but we are committed to doing it, so we wanted to just highlight it.
The RFB, right?
Yeah.
And that's something that you guys would be funding, I've got it.
Yep. And how, how that actually looks, we're happy to discuss, whether it's a financial contribution or Gray Star actually does.
So that was one of the big items, I think, as Tim alluded to, it was just, they felt that the right-of-way was squeezing the new layout with the bike lane, they were fighting for space. So again, Gray Stars agreed to basically give an additional foot beyond the right-of-way via an easement or similar, and we'll install that sidewalk as part of the project so that when they come in, you know, again, coordinating up till construction to make sure the sidewalk we construct aligns with the sidewalk they would construct as part of the TIP, and then they're coming in, putting the bike lane, and doing some of those other improvements as part of their project.
Is that affecting any of your landscaping at this point, giving up that foot?
No, I mean, very minor. Again, it's, you know, it's kind of weighing landscaping and, and I guess, public benefit through the cross-section associated with the roadway and the bike lane, which we saw as kind of giving the space that that wants to have. I think outweighs, you know, losing a little bit of green space. We were still able to massage some of that landscaping and trees, tree locations to fit them in along the front edge, so largely unchanged.
And the issue of the doors and the openings out under the street, that wasn't impacted then? Okay.
No.
So you have that out?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we felt comfortable with the one-foot give, again, trying to maintain that feel of still a little bit of privacy on those, those walkout entrances. And then the other items, I think they were generally happy with the drainage approach and the design. They did provide some updated drainage plans from some recent improvements, and asked that we modify one of the drainage connections, so we made that update in the latest plans that were provided, as well as sewer connections being made at sewer manholes instead of directly into the main for maintenance on both, for both parties, which, which was, which was fine as well, and is reflected in the updated plan. So I think those are the major items, and then some, some ongoing coordination as we get closer to building permit and their traffic improvement plan advances, but-
Can you grab the looped water line?
Yes, and the water line is looped, as shown, and as originally submitted, so they were very happy with that approach and wanted to see that loop.
One, one thing I was uncertain about, and that was, so on the, on the parking lot side, when the cars pull in, so they're pulling in, so there's no, there's no buffer between the, you know, the parking, heading towards the building, a little sidewalk, and then the units, as far as, there's no buffer there, as far as the headlights going into the units? What's happening, just, what's happening there as far as?
Oh, oh, sorry, on this line?
Yeah, 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 so on the, on the west side.
Yeah.
So what's happening there?
Yeah, there, I guess, ultimately, they're, sorry. Yeah, ultimately, there may be some lights going into the, into those spots. I mean, I think our hope is that the person who lives there would be parking in those spots. So, but, yeah, I mean, it's going to, we're going to, it's going to kind of be based on the-
Yes, Adam?
Do you mean, are you talking about cars that may be coming down Morton?
No, no, cars that pull into the back parking lot on the western side, so they're going to pull in into the, and then they'll curve in facing the building with the headlights. Just curious if there's any, what thoughts you've had with that and the impact on the residents there, and if there's any space to do anything there. Is there any space to do anything there?
Yeah, there's not, no, there's not really enough space to do anything significant to mitigate it. I mean, we do have a lounge space over there, but we're going to, we're going to put some, like, that has like a glass outside, that we're going to put some, what is it, like a, kind of like a film that's going to kind of mitigate that and have some trebery there. Yeah, ultimately, it's going to, you know, shades and all that stuff.
So I saw in the notes, the notes that you guys sent, you know, a lot of the, the concerns with the parking on the off-street and on the Morton Street, Mellon Street, and perhaps any other part of the neighborhood around there, you're going to have strict internal control as far as what the residents know where they can and cannot park.
100%. Yeah, so as a part of their welcome package, it'll be well-known that you cannot park on any streets, that you cannot cross into Morton out of that exit. We will also have at the, at the front, at the entrance of our building, where, you know, oh, I should say at the exit of our building, we typically have a TV that shows when trains and, and all of that are coming for, so that people know. That will have, will include a sign that says you cannot park overnight, you cannot park on the street. You know, we'll educate our residents as much as we can.
And as Tim mentioned earlier, we think the supply is more than adequate to service the need to.
And we'll have something in the, the order conditions that states the fact that if there's residents parking overnight in those other areas, those residences, that, you know, initially, the police department will take care of ticketing as needed and kind of let them know what's going on, but at some point, when they get some complaints, they have to come back to you and talk about it.
Okay.
Let me open it up. You guys-
So I guess, just before we, if you don't, we'll just close out, and then we can, so just to recap to you from the last, from the last meeting, that there's really two criteria for site plan review, that we submitted everything that's required, and that we comply with the dimensionals, the off-streets, the development standards, and the affordable. Between the site plan approval set, the architectural set, the traffic impact report, and the drainage report, we have met all the submittal requirements. We spent, I won't go back through this, we spent last time, we comply with zoning, you know, subject to getting that waiver on the interior, but again, we still have the open space that's required. So, you know, we do believe we have satisfied the criteria, and I'll speak closer to the mic again. And we do, we did incorporate the, the comments into that plan set that we had, and we have a paper copy here tonight. So, thank you. We're here. The whole team's here for questions.
Eric, do you have any questions right now?
Just a few questions. First, thank you for the, the updated presentation and listening to this board, listening to members of the public and trying to accommodate some of the sort of common themes that we heard in the, in the last meeting. Just a couple of questions, a couple of things that were said tonight, the, the request for overnight parking, you mentioned there was three to five requests per day. Is that at similarly situated and sized properties, and also sort of, you know, next to commuter rail, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I would say similar properties, and then even some more bigger properties.
Okay. And then my next question is, the 90% utilization rate, which you described as sort of a conservative number, do you have similar properties where there is a 90% or, or higher utilization rate? Like, is-
Yeah, it tends to be non-transit oriented sites in very rural suburban markets tend to have higher ones.
And then for the transit oriented sites, and I'm sure you collect data on this, you know, one thing that we've heard from the community is just there's sort of this assumption that every unit's going to have at least one parking space. What does the data tell you with similarly situated sites that are transit oriented, the number of units that don't have any parking spaces, what's, what's the breakdown?
Yeah, well, I guess the, the simple answer would be the 10%, right? That doesn't have that in similar sites. I guess from a unit count perspective, we could apply that to, you know, say it's a 350-unit deal, it'd be 35 units that wouldn't have parking, right? I guess it's the simple answer. I'm trying to think if we have anything specific.
While, while you're thinking? The other thing I would say is that the mix here is such that there's a lot of studios and one-beds, which by virtue of that will dictate that you're, you're more likely to have single people in those units and not need for more cars, and, you know, some of those single people will use the train to commute to work and Uber and all that sort of stuff, too.
It's kind of hard to nail down the actual number, right? Because that, that parking utilization also accounts for people with two cars, right? Or people with one car, right? So it's, it's hard to nail down the exact number of units that have cars versus don't, but more focus on the utilization rate that, of total, yeah, is the easier way to understand.
All right, and then maybe last, one last comment, and thank you for addressing the deliveries and-
Yeah, of course.
In the parking lot, rather, in the front. I, I think maybe, maybe that welcome package that you mentioned, still have a concern that some of those residents with those great front door, you know, they'll ask the Uber driver to just deliver at the front door to make it, I mean, I sure, I would do that myself, but if that could also be part of the, the welcome package materials to make it clear that the deliveries, including for food delivery, is just going to be in that one, in that one area.
Yeah.
You go?
No further questions.
I think Justin went, Justin went to ask something.
This is a parking-related, so just to, just to piggyback. Thank you, Natasha. I hope you're going next. So I've talked to a lot of folks. First of all, by the way, this is, this is great. I support this project. I, I do, I do have a problem with the, with the 90%, because I don't necessarily think, I mean, I think that last meeting, I think there was someone here who said that, oh, it was, you know, between 87 and 90%, and that's what we do in Somerville, or something like that, in which there are towns in which you can live in without a car, and I'm not saying that you can't, because there are people in Needham that don't have a car. But grocery shopping, going down, you know, everything you're doing, this, unfortunately, this town is not a, we don't have a heavy public infrastructure, a public transportation infrastructure. We have the commuter rail bringing you to Boston, it's kind of expensive in Zone 1 to just go from Needham to Needham, but, and it's not conducive, because that's just the stops aren't oriented that way. But, and the 50, the 57 or 59, whatever it is, you know, going to, from, from Junction to Watertown Square isn't necessarily, it, it, its cadence isn't necessarily from, from a, from a Needham to Needham kind of transit, it's not ideal. So I don't know if we're going to do the 90%. So that's why I'm like, I know somewhere in here, and I don't know how my fellow board members are here, because we always have to like, where's the balance between green space and where, I, I know that there was additional, possibly three more spaces, if we were looking at going between 11% down to 9% or something like that, there, because I, I think parking spaces are going to become an issue, especially when it comes down to parking on these other streets. And, you know, this neighborhood has experienced, you know, the previous, the, the previous business here, you had a lot of staff members who were parking in the streets or commuting through, going through, and I, cutting, and I appreciate the, you know, trying to keep the signs saying, don't, don't cut through Morton, don't cut through this, and that's fine, but I think parking from a visitor perspective, I, you know, 189 units, you have two to three people, two to, three to five, I mean, on a Friday night, you're going to have people over or whatever, you're going to have some people visiting, and, and I think there's going to be more cars that are going to be out on the street that you intend to. So I'd rather find a way to figure out if we can carve out a few more spaces. I don't necessarily, like, a dog park is great. Dog park, it's like a puppy park. I mean, this isn't a lot of footprint to do something that's useful. I think the amenity is, the intention of the amenity is to like, let's, let's do something that's, that's good for the, but people bring their dogs, they don't, there's no dog park there anyway. So is there something that we can do to maybe carve a little bit more out of that back area that would maybe add three to five spots that would maybe decompress that staff parking and then bring it closer to, because I think that's six spaces of staff, with a six staff that all have cars, right? Something that would decompress the parking issue a little bit, because I really think that we're, because we're sticking to that's 90%, I don't think that 90% is right, and I don't know if you're right any more than I'm right. You know, it's one of these things where it's like, so, so we're just kind of betting this based on kind of what we're, the, the look and feel. That's what I'm trying to figure out, and, you know, obviously, green space is a volatile issue, but, you know, especially with maybe some of my other board members, but I would rather find a place to keep the cars on the space, to keep more cars in space rather than out on Morton Street or other areas.
So maybe I could just offer a few things, and then I'll defer to Tim. The, I'll call it the, the dog park, is sort of off limits on this issue from a zoning standpoint, not from a, you know, our standpoint, because the way the zoning was put together, there's no waiver from that.
Yes.
So that, that area is sort of a, that's open space, you know?
Yeah.
And I would just offer, in, in what you were saying, a few facts, you know, that the employees at night won't be there. So there is four spaces to your, to your overnight guest point.
So you have two full times overnight, right?
Two, yeah. So, so there's four that-
Okay.
-effectively are available at night that aren't available during the day. And none of our counts account for any of the street parking that's out here and metered, that someone who's coming in, you know, to visit somebody, particularly these people who front on Highland, could come in and use and pay for, you know, to, to stay.
Not overnight, but not overnight?
No, not overnight, but at night-
Like, one o'clock in the morning, technically.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and not overnight, but there is, there are a few more spaces that do become available overnight. And then the other thing I would say is that, I think Tim might have mentioned this, but, you know, we could explore whether there's an opportunity to park some of those employees during the day off-site.
Okay.
That's something that, you know, so-
We can explore that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's even the permitted parking spaces.
Exactly, yeah.
The town permitted parking spaces.
Yes.
Natasha?
So, I wasn't here last week, but I listened to, Lee sent me the, the information. So I am also supportive of the project. I think it's a great project. I do have a couple of questions, and you might have answered them already, but there's so much information that I just want to make sure that. I know it's a passive house project, is what I, and that it's wood-framed. Is it heavy timber or just, or wheels?
This is Tom Lassie.
Yeah, Tom Lassie, project manager, keep three. So it's, it's light frame wood construction, type five.
Okay, and then it's passive house, so you have the-
Correct.
The woofy model and all that.
We have passive house consultants, so they're doing the, the, they've done a feasibility model study, and we're going through the passive house, you know, criteria with FIES.
Perfect. And then are there, are you doing LEED or you're just doing passive?
We're just doing passive, passive.
And any sustainable side elements, like, so I saw you have all the stormwater retention and everything. Are you capturing any stormwater? And any sustainable side elements, like, so I saw you have all the stormwater retention and everything, are you capturing any stormwater?
Yeah, fully compliant, you know, capturing, treating and infiltrating the stormwater.
But you're not reusing it back in the building or anything like that?
No, I think we're continuing to evaluate that as we go through the project design, but.
So that, and so regarding the site also, one question is, I saw that it says retain the fence, existing wall to remain against the MBTA line. Are you replacing that fence? It's like half.
Yeah, so we are replacing the fence, I think to clarify, the existing building is right up on the right of way of the MBTA. So we're exploring how we can cut that down without fully removing the wall, because there's a basement as well. And we want to minimize any disruption to the MBTA operations and work within their right of way. So I think we're hoping to cut down just where that building exists today, the building wall to retain it as a wall.
Because I thought it, yeah. Okay, but you're replacing the fence, and then are you taking down all of those trees that are there?
Yeah.
See, it's some plantings here.
And then supplementing with new plantings, yep. Because some of them are old and they're a little, I think it talks to MBTA. We're putting in lower plantings that won't be a concern of them falling onto the tracks, whereas some of the existing vegetation, unfortunately, they have that concern, so.
Okay, then the other, I had a couple more questions on, so regarding crosswalks, I see that there's a crosswalk on Highland Ave when you get towards the residential piece, that has some pavement or something to that. I mean, are you, are you replacing these crosswalks currently where they are with the different material, or are you? I'm thinking. Here, any kind of pavement change here and here?
Yep.
Where you have these curb cuts?
So our new curb cuts, yeah, those are designed to, to keep the pedestrian up at pedestrian levels. So they're your typical kind of ramp up, concrete aprons.
Okay.
That ramp up quickly, have the pedestrian experience, so they're up at, you know, at curb height the whole way, walking across those.
And marked so that people can see, I'm just thinking if people are walking over to the train and you're actually, because you're creating housing, making sure that it's safe, because West Street in general has a lot of traffic. And I know that there's a huge, like, what, it looks like painted crosswalk over here to the train. But it's on the tracks, it's not across, so just thinking about how people move through the site safely, I think would be really helpful.
Understood, yeah, we're open to striping those, I think typically.
It's not a crosswalk, it's.
A driveway.
That's a do not cross, so I didn't see a crosswalk. Right, because it's a train, right, but I didn't see a crosswalk in the plans that is in front of it, because otherwise people are going to come through here, and if they're coming out of these spaces, they're not going to go here to go.
Whatever that road is, the four-way hillside are the only two crosswalks on that side. And honestly, you can't place a crosswalk too close to the railroad tracks, because buses and hazardous cargo vehicles need to stop by state law. And so by doing that, if you're stopping at a crosswalk, they could potentially be stopping in the right of way of a train, which is one of the reasons why they got rid of the one in downtown, because it was not compliant.
Because it was not working.
And one of the things, just yesterday with the DPW, we did talk about this issue a little bit, in the sense of the quiet zone improvements and the pre-signals and the signals. So, and what we talked about is coordinating with them on that, so we would certainly expect to be coordinating in that area and, you know, on Highland as well.
Yeah, and I think just in general, we're trying to make it so that it's safe for people to take the MBTA train. So having, looking at how to make it as safe as possible.
A little further down, you could do one at the, beyond the tracks. It's, you might be able to do one before, we were looking at it, but there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on there.
But I just want to make sure people are safe, this is your guy right here. But I just, I just want to make sure, I mean, if this is.
You're completely right, that's, that's a very complex.
I mean, yeah, my office used to be right behind there, and people walk, you just basically walk across the street, because you're not going to walk all the way to the light.
Yes.
And people walking over to the senior center as well, they're just, they're just going to cross over and cross through the parking lot and go over there probably.
And then my, I think the last question that I have in general is building signage. So understanding eventually, is it going to be lit, is it not going to be, I mean, this is a commercial slash residential area, so just understanding how that will be on the building, and I know that's probably, I don't know if it's in our purview, but I know that we, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Right, but understanding the scale of the neighborhood versus the scale of the commercial, and I'm sure you'll go through design review for that, but I just, I think those are my own questions.
I think that, having read through the submission that you made in response to municipal comments and those from residents, I think you've done a good job at working within the constraints of the site and the zoning to address those concerns. You've also agreed to participate in traffic mitigation in and around the site, which, which to Natasha's point, I think is, you know, a beneficial add to the town and necessary, you know, given the expectation that, you know, many residents will be out on foot, you know, going to the senior center on the one hand, and then also to the businesses around. You know, I do, like, if I live there and Justin's going to come over for dinner, you know, he probably, he probably won't stay until one o'clock in the morning, unless I have a really late start on dinner, you know, you'd be welcome to, but you couldn't have a car.
Well, you have the extra bed.
It depends, not if I have a studio. So, so I, I I recognize that it can be a bit of a trick, but I think that you're working within a reasonable framework to try and accommodate as many of those spaces as possible and to free up where possible. You talked about having like three to five parking spaces is typically what you have for guest parking. I guess my only question relates to what size building, how many units would that be? Is that for like a two-hundred unit building, a four-hundred unit building?
Yeah, so, so that, we use that number from our EBR projects, the smallest building there is three hundred and twenty-five units, the biggest is four hundred and fifty.
And that, and you, that, those sites, you have between three and five guest parking spaces?
That, that's the request, so we typically, we don't have designated spots for guests. We have, so whatever is open, you can park in that space, that is the request from the tenant for, for guest parking.
Per day.
Per day, yeah, typically on.
And that's the demand, and what's the capacity at those sites?
You mean from a parking perspective? Or like a utilization there is very low, it's like a, I want to say like between point five and point six?
I guess what I'm getting at is, if you have a demand for five spaces, do you have capacity to service those five spaces of those other sites?
Yes.
I have no further comments or questions, thank you.
So certainly with the guest parking, you're saying they have to check in with the building, and then obviously they're assigned a number here for parking site sixty-seven or something like that. On the, on the bait boxes, I mean, this, this comes up all, I mean, general, general public comes up a lot of times, like with the bait boxes, they go in, they eat the bait, they go, they go away from the bait box, and then some, some hawk or some cat or whatever, then picks it up, eats it, then they're poisoned. I actually don't know where to go with that, I mean, I know it happens, I don't know what the options are with that, but I know it happens.
I don't know the answer to that either.
Yeah.
But we can, we can find the best ways to mitigate while balancing the after effect.
Yeah, I don't know the best way, I just know it happens, or if there's a, if there's a better way.
Sure, we'll explore that, thank you.
I know this is going to be continued, because we still have information within the engineering, right, Liz? I'm sorry, Lee, we're going to, we're going to continue, because we need information still. So we have to continue it for that purpose.
We weren't expecting that. Yesterday, Lee, you had said that we wanted to have things reflected on the plan, and we brought it tonight.
I know, but they've got to look at the revised drawings, they haven't seen them.
I mean, we would request that if the board is willing to act on it, subject to them seeing that plan or, and providing any comments, which we've done in other projects. So, that would be our preference for sure, you know, so.
I would respectfully.
Do you have any further revision by the, by engineering department?
I'm fine with, I'm fine with looking at it that way, but.
And I'll just add, I think, maybe, you know, getting into the technical jargon is, you know, not for everyone, but the requested revisions were very minor in nature and have no issue accommodating them, they're pretty straightforward, so.
I think, I think the other issue was that they hadn't commented, they hadn't commented yet on the traffic study. I think from their memo to us, they had not reviewed the traffic study, and they said they were going to comment on that after their meeting with you. So that, we are, we're holding it open actually for comments, so it's clear on the plan itself, the revisions and their comments on the traffic study.
So we may, so we may not be able to just administratively, I mean, after.
I, I mean, honestly, I don't remember that from yesterday, Lee, I mean.
That was in, that was in their memo that they wrote, that's why I just assumed we were going to continue up for their comments. And the memo that they wrote to the board at the last meeting, they said they were still reviewing the traffic impact assessment, and they expect to have more information on that for the planning board meeting, which would, which would have been this meeting. And they said they were, they were going to schedule a discussion with the applicants, engineers, to have some further discussions on that, on traffic improvements.
I viewed yesterday as the conversation that was referenced in that, because we did, I thought we had a good conversation about various things, and we talked about parking, we talked about the crosswalks. So I read all that to be yesterday's meeting was that discussion, and that's why at the end of the meeting, I asked specifically what we were supposed to be reflecting on the plan as a next step, and we heard, you know, the drainage, the crosswalk, all of which are on the plan. So, from our perspective, we responded to every comment we've received, and we had the meeting that was asked for. So we would, you know, if the board's inclined, we would ask that the board approves, subject to resolving any things that we have to. We fully expect, as we talked about yesterday, to coordinate on the quiet zone things and things as goes forward prior to building permit. But, you know, from our perspective, we've responded to it.
So what if, what if the hearing is just held open for the purpose of accepting their comments on the revised drawings and issuing their final comments?
I would rather it be a condition that we submit and that they approve it prior to issuance of a building permit, as we do with any of the, you know, like on children's, when we had some raised crosswalks and things that we resolved prior to issuance of building permit. That, that's how I viewed where we are and how I would request that we proceed.
You know, it's, well, it sounds like, I mean, you know, in what you're talking about, I mean, I would like to just close it.
They, they have reflected on the drawings, what was discussed there, I was just, was trying to.
So what's missing is their comments on the parking and transit traffic, the traffic.
Anything that wasn't covered on that, and there were other things that we talked about doing as conditions of approval, they were going to put into some kind of formalized memo. So we could just hold it open for the purposes of receiving that and then closing it.
I don't see any, I don't see any harm in doing that.
So what does that do to timeline?
Yeah, I mean, it's really, so.
If you're, if you're holding it open, that means another two weeks, and then we don't, we can all close it, but we then wait another two weeks after that, is that?
It means that a decision gets issued at the meeting, not the next meeting with the meeting after that.
So it's a two-week delay.
I guess, I just.
I don't think you're going to have a decision at the next planning board meeting, so I think, I think either way, if the decision would be issued, what's the schedule here?
I mean, I guess in my, well, a few things, I guess, I think where we are is sort of the typical, like, they give Lee the information, the decision gets drafted, we get the opportunity to sit with the board and provide our comments, and you guys finalize it. So that's sort of how I view where we are from a, you know, Gray Star has the property under agreement, they've got diligence, they've got investors. So being able to show, show that forward progress is important.
Well, I mean, this is forward progress, I mean, we're just, you know, we're just waiting for their comments on the traffic, and just make certain what they have to say and just a couple of minutes.
I mean, can we, and this is just me, I mean, can we close the hearing pending the review of the parking study by engineering?
You could close it with the purpose of accepting their comments, which can be read into the record.
Right.
And considered in your decision.
And if something comes up, we could always reopen.
Which most likely would be in two weeks, would that be, if, you mean?
So, so, yeah.
First, I was still speaking, that's all right, that's cool.
Yes, so, yeah, so we can.
I'm assuming we'd have that within two weeks, which would be by the twenty-first, and I'm assuming the decision for the board would be at their first meeting in November.
Okay, so if we, if we can, based on that, and if something comes up which requires additional information or comments or opening it up, we can always do that, we don't foresee that, of course, but Lee, I mean.
Just hold it open for the purpose of accepting that particular piece of information.
That's different though.
That's, that's, yeah.
It's different, we're, what, hold on a second. We're talking about two different paths. Option one is to close it, subject to, subject to subsequent comments from the engineering department on a, on, in response to this, which is in response, which is responsive to the conversation that was held earlier today, I believe. The other, the other option, option two, is to hold the hearing open with the sole purpose to receive those comments. The advantage in doing that is if there, if there is a misunderstanding between one or you, one of the two parties, then there's, the hearing's open, and we don't have to renotice, and we can continue, you know, to, you know, to address in a public forum any of those, any of those issues that may arise, although there may be none. It sounds as though the net impact is almost the same. That on the one hand, you'll, on the one hand, with option A, if we close the hearing tonight, subject to subsequent comment from the engineering department, you're still not going to get the decision, the written decision, although I guess that could be substantially drafted, and, you know, it could be sent over to you, but it likely won't be finalized until the, until the second meeting, the meeting in November at that point, which is the same impact as option two, where we hold it open for receipt of those comments in case we have to have an ongoing conversation. Am I misjudging that?
No, I don't think anyone's, I was, I think, maybe proposing option three, which is that it feels to me like at this point, we're at the place that we get to on projects where.
Yep, it is.
There, there's some loose ends that we resolve prior to, candidly, prior to issuance of building permit. And that you would just condition, you, you would.
Because you've satisfied.
Yes.
Specifically because you've satisfied the requirements of the bylaw.
Yes.
That's actually, that's true. That's right.
But I know they wanted to, you know, talk to you about I and I, finalize how that was going to be managed, we were going to finalize, and they were going to have some.
But those would always be conditions that we pay I and I prior to the issuance of a building, but I just don't see any reason at this point.
If you were going to articulate what was, what they wanted in a final memo, which was what we were going to utilize to draft the decision to make sure we had covered all the bases, because it wasn't clear, I don't have anything from DPW that articulates what they want in addition to what's reflected on these drawings as conditions of approval.
And the one thing I would add to that.
So I would just like to have that record clean, so when we prepare the decision, is reflected in the decision?
The other, the other part to this is we can't have a decision that's pending subsequent, you know, approvals. We, that was part of, that was part of a.
Right, and I, I think in this case, the, the standard for the issuance of site plan approval is that we've submitted everything and satisfied the standards.
Right.
We have.
That's true.
They have thirty-five days to issue their comments, that's passed. And so we're at a point where they provided some comments, and we're agreeing to them. So to me, it feels like we're at a place where, prior to issuance of the building permit, we would submit a plan confirming it meets and pay I and I, which all of which was reflected in the memo that they've already sent and we've responded to. So that, that's why I am making the request I'm making, that, you know, we respectfully request that it gets approved, subject to those conditions.
And when would you anticipate the decision?
I mean, you know, when it's, when it's reasonable, you know, I mean, I, you know.
How does it fit in all criteria as far as when we close, do we close, when we close, as far as what we're waiting for from the, in the building?
In the past, we would have just held it open for the purpose of getting their comments and closing, closing it out.
So that's, that's a normal pathway.
That's the normal pathway.
Well, we've also, we've also, in other circumstances, proceeded. Well, we've also, we've also in other circumstances proceeded differently.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly remember sometimes, you know, the comment from the police department or part of, we're waiting for some additional comments. We've closed it up pending those additional comments, but I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if this fits onto that category.
For DPW, we've generally gotten the final closeout memo from them. I mean, we, we just met yesterday.
Yeah.
I mean, this meeting that we have, which is yesterday, these drawings, these drawings came in for the first time on a slide tonight, so, um.
It doesn't sound like it's going to change the timeframe really when you're getting that. I understand why you want to, doesn't sound like it's going to change that as far as.
Well, from our perspective, it would just change being done with the process of having the project approved, subject to doing a decision, which is a, it's a material.
Yes.
Thing on the, on the deal. I mean, you know, we're, they're in diligence, you know, so, listen, we.
It's a, it's a, it's a minor thing, it's.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Worst case scenario is if there is, and we don't think that there will be, if there is a scenario where engineering causes this whole thing to blow up, then we'd have to, the risk to you is we would have to renotice the hearing and open another hearing. Doesn't sound like that's going to happen. And I'm satisfied that you met the requirements of the bylaw to close this thing. And to start working on, uh, start, you know, draft, you'll have the comments from, from engineering. By the time, you, and by the time the decision is, uh, is given to us and to you, it'll already incorporate the, any subsequent requirement that, that engineering has. So I'm actually satisfied with that.
I'm not sure what, what you're saying.
I'm saying that I, I, I would propose, I mean, we still have an open hearing, we still have public comment. Subject to anything else coming up during the public comment period, I would, I would support closing the hearing tonight, subject to, uh, engineering's approval of these comments.
I'd support that as well, I would be in support of that as well. It, it, it sounds like the, the scope of the review by engineering is going to review what was already discussed and contemplated and agreed upon. Again, the, the risk and the likelihood of there being something that's going to blow this up is what you're going to have to, to bear if you're going to have to reopen the hearing. But based on what we've discussed, I would support that path.
Yeah, I would also support your.
Okay, so be, but before, before we do anything, what we're going to do, this is still a public hearing. Um, I'll, I'll allow about 15 minutes if anyone online or anyone, anyone in the room here would like to come up, make a comment. Just raise your hand again, again, about 15 minutes at the most. And again, three minutes, take three minutes to make your comments, please don't go over that. And I know if, if they're the exact same as they were before, try to verify, verify, vary them a little bit. And so, take, actually, we're going to take online first, Susan has her hand up. Susan, are you there? Yeah, yeah, I know, she's not, she's not unmuted yet. Looks like you're still muted, Susan, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Please state your.
Sorry about that, I'm sorry about that.
Name and address, please.
Susan Herman, 13 Carey Road. Did you catch that?
No, please say it again in three minutes total.
Susan Herman, 13 Carey Road. I have two questions based on the discussion tonight. Typically, what percent of the units actually rent and pay for a space? Or do tenants in your other buildings hope to find parking or even pay for parking in the other areas around the current buildings that you operate? The second question has to do with deliveries. It's great they're going to be in the back, the exit and entrance to that would be opt, optimally, it would be West Street. If you have a lot of, uh, deliveries, um, using the Highland Avenue entrance and egress, you're going to defeat, um, keeping traffic off the neighborhood streets. So those are my, those are my two questions. I think there, the deliveries is extremely important to use West Street. And I'd like the information on what percent of your residents, or in this case, it would be unit, actually pay for a space. And I'm wondering if that has played into your 90% ratio. Because it's, it's, as the planning board, uh, Justin has spoken, it's very unrealistic to not have a car and need them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Susan. I think the percentage of people that are leasing the spots has been stated and Justin commented on his question whether that was going to be the case. In, in addition, the, the deliveries, I'm going to hold off on that for a little, I'm going to hold off on that answer right now for a little bit. I'd like to get some, I'd like to get some other comments and then we can, then we can see if we can have any, any common threads of any questions we have. So Susan, uh, Jean? Come, come up to the, come up to the microphone, please, state your name, address, and again, three minutes, maximum, please.
My question was to clarify on the deliveries. Susan apparently knew that they now are going to be in the rear, but I didn't hear that stated myself clearly.
Yes, yes, it was stated, it was stated definitely very clear, they're going to be in the rear.
They're going to be.
They're going to be in the rear, yes.
Okay, and would there be any kind of instructions or, or, you know, so people know that's.
Yes, the, yes, the answer is yes, yes.
Then my other question, uh, when, in, in that discussion about, uh, road and control, made me think of this. You spoke about dumpsters. Well, I live in a multifamily housing and, um, the, um, the trash, uh, and garbage goes down a chute into a very big container that's, and, and that's inside the building. And also there's a recycling area that's inside the building with a service door so that the truck could come up and, and get the trash and the recycling. Is that what you're talking about, or you're talking about?
Jean, 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 address, Jean, address the chair, please, we're not talking directly to the applicant.
Sorry, my question has to do with whether, but when you spoke of dumpsters, are they talking about dumpsters that will be outside the building or inside the building for both trash and recycling?
Okay, thank you, Jean, okay. And I'm going to, I'll, I'll tag that up as well. And we, we will get to the answers in a few minutes, uh, right there.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Caponia.
Uh, wait, Jean.
Sorry, I'm Elizabeth Caponia, I'm a town meeting member of Precinct J, which this construction project is in. And so I had, um, one additional comment about the, the rodent control. First of all, I think we've made great progress from all the issues of last, uh, last meeting. So I think there should also be mitigation for rodents to the residents around the facility because it's well known that when rodents, meaning rats, um, are disturbed with new construction destruction, they kind of try to find a new home. And I think some adjoining residences may have rodent problems and maybe that can be part of the mitigation, that the company would send somebody over and try to, you know, take care of it. The other, the other comment I have is that, um, I have lived through such a big construction quite a few years ago. I live right behind where the Panera Bread construction project occurred. And, um, it needs to be really codified on the days that the demolition and the construction is allowed and the hours of operation and if there's any holidays, you know, because what happened there is that construction occurred on Sundays. So we want to avoid this. And, um, the other problem that occurred that was extremely annoying and took a while to solve was let's say you could start construction at 7:00 AM, well, the trucks started coming in at 6:30. And they had their engines going, they were dragging over open metal fences, they were talking loud. So, um, that had to be stopped, but that took quite a while. So maybe we can preempt these kind of problems, nip them in the bud so they don't occur.
Okay.
Okay, that, those were my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the, actually someone online, Alex, do you want one?
Hi, good evening.
Your full name and address, please, David.
Yeah, David Reschka, 21 Rosemary Street. Uh, I wasn't planning to speak, but I, I just, I had to chime in after hearing the discussion again on parking. Parking is what creates traffic, having vehicle storage is what enables traffic. So many people are complaining about traffic or concerned about traffic, the way to reduce traffic is to reduce parking. If a developer thinks they don't need an oversupply of parking, we should celebrate it, we should encourage it. And more power to them, if they can find people who are willing to live a car-free or car-light lifestyle, that's awesome. It's what we need for the future, that's what we should be celebrating, encouraging and supporting. We should be asking the developer, can you get by with less parking? Not build more parking because we lack the imagination. I know many of us need automobiles to get around, but just because we do doesn't mean future residents here will need an automobile. So that would be my, my question, uh, through the chair to pose to the developer. What can you do to further reduce the amount of excess parking? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else, uh, I think, yeah, there you go. Name and, name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Ken Buckley, thank you for, uh, having the hearing and having.
Oh, yeah, your name and, your address, please.
221 Warren Street, it's like it's sort of just is in the back of my mind, doesn't come out of my mouth, sorry. Um, just a few, a few quick points. While I do love David's enthusiasm for bicycles and reduce parking, I think from prag, pragmatism tells us the current residents are very concerned, much like Justin said earlier. And, um, one of the things that I hear is this, the point eight to point nine ratio, uh, don't know what developments it came from. I think Eric, you brought it up earlier. Gray Star themselves said that they're going to charge for parking. And so I'm wondering if, um, I think a similar question was asked, did that statistic come from a charged, uh, complexes that charge for parking? Because that does incentivize people to not park there and therefore that ratio is, um, a bit fictitious, I'm going to put it that dramatically. And therefore will in fact cause off-site parking, which many of the neighborhood residents are concerned about. So I'll reiterate what I said in the last meeting, I do think that, um, Gray Star did mention in this current packet that they're looking at mitigation strategies. I'd like to hear a, a stronger plan on that point. Um, and then one other question is in regards to bicycles, electric bikes, um, sufficient outside parking or covered parking for those? So there's not a fire hazard indoors, I did want to bring that up as well. So, um, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Frank.
Good evening, my name is Franklin, I'm also a town meeting member, oh, I'm 47 Mellon Street in Needham. I'm also, um, a representative, a, from Precinct J in Town Meeting. And, uh, like my fellow representative Elizabeth behind me, I agree there, a lot of creative work has been done since the last meeting. As a certified uncreative person, I do look for people like the developers and wonder, Mr. Chairman, whether the article, the issue that's been left behind is the by traffic going up. It was an issue of mine last week and it hasn't been mentioned, the, uh, the idea of traffic going up Morton, Mellon and Carey Streets and to avoid Highland Avenue. That was, was mentioned by me and some other people last week, but it wasn't even brought up by the developers tonight. Now, they are creative people and they can come up with creative solutions to this thing. So I would ask that this board, ask them to come up with a creative solution to reduce traffic in the by streets. All right, thank you.
Okay, um, I think that's, I think that's it right now. So we had, well, I mean, there's a question about the percent of the parking, I think that was answered. The, the developers are talking about nine, 90% rate, wherever that winds up, that's what they're talking about. Talking about deliveries, this is getting into the, the Morton, Mellon, Carey roads, cover both those at the same time. They're, in the, in the packet that we had, they're, they are clearly stating that there is going to be, um, in the welcoming packet for all the residences is going to clearly state that they're not allowed to use those as cut-throughs. And there's going to be signage exiting on Highland Ave that says, that states that as well, is that correct? Okay, so there is going to be signs that state there not to use those roads for a cut-through. I understand people do what they do, but that's what, that's what they're going to do to try to minimize anything that happens with that. As far as, as far as the delivery instructions, again, the, the, there are going to be clear delivery instructions. As far as rodents and dumpsters, actually, uh, maybe I, I don't remember where, where are the dumpsters, I don't remember where they, where are the dumpsters? I'm sorry, I don't remember where they are. Show them where they are.
Just to answer that question, what I was talking about was during construction and they will move while they're on construction site as we're doing certain things. But to answer the question earlier, there are going to be dumpsters, we have a trash room similar to what was described by the, um, by the question. So it will be inside, we have a trash chute, it will be, everything will be internal, the, um, it will pick it up, bring it right outside into a truck.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lee, what is the, what is, what are the normal hours of operation that we allow for this type of construction? Days and hours of operation?
I think it's Monday through Saturday, but let me just get the hours from a comparable permit. When I move on, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Why don't we look that up? I don't think we have, in full transparency, the authority to require mitigation in the event of, you know, a rodent explosion. Or shark nado, if there's rat nado. But is there a possibility where if there's a certain increase, you know, in the rodent population adversely impacting, you know, neighboring properties to, um, you know, um, to be responsive to that and to participate in additional rodent measures? Yeah.
Why don't you speak, speak, sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going to say something that was wrong. So, you, you know, on a project like this, there'd be a construction management plan, I assume we'd file that with the town. It would have the, the measures that would be in place plus a contact person if something like that were to happen. So, so there, there are measures, we didn't get into it, you know, in, in tonight's meeting, but yes, those are in place and we would expect they would be in place.
I believe our building inspector did a request out of the last meeting.
Yeah.
That was one of the things, was the construction manager plan, which would include the road control during the.
And how the, you know, it will be, it'll be one for demolition and one for vertical construction.
What I would like to see, Lee, is some kind of a posting on a conspicuous location, you know, for, you know, on a, on a sign. It doesn't have to be a huge sign, but a reasonably sized sign that can withstand the weather elements, you know, for contact information during construction. So people have easy access to that information. Were you able to condition that?
Yes, actually, uh, you asked me the question, so last time we issued the permit of this location, which was for the rehab of that building, the hour, the limits we put on construction were seven to five, Monday through Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
That's impressive, Lee.
Um, just, just, just go through the, the rest of them. I, I appreciate David Hareska's desire, because I know him, I know him fairly well, and his, and his desire to decrease parking. But there is a, this is as a right, you have to, I mean, you have a right to, you, you don't have to do that, I suppose, but it's an as a right and I don't, I don't think there's going to be a creative way you're going to want to decrease parking. But is there a creative way to any, to decrease parking?
Not based on the feedback we've received.
Again, I understand David, David's question though, which is, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great constant, it's a great thing to strive towards. The electric bikes, actually, what is, what is going to be a policy for electric bikes?
Yeah, we typically don't allow them to be stored indoors for the reason obviously stated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have anything else, I don't have anything else.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the hearing, subject to, um, receipt of subsequent comments from the engineering department in response to the plan submitted, the updated plan submitted.
I second, I second that.
Okay, motion seconded. Any comments? Nothing on that? Eric?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
We'll wait to see what the comments are and I'm sure we'll be fine. We'll move on from there.
Just for scheduling purposes, we would be, what do we decide for the next time we're with you?
We'll get the comments back from them. We'll do a draft, I'll do a draft decision after that.
Okay.
And we'll schedule it for a vote at the first meeting in November.
November, okay.
Well, thanks, guys. We, we look forward to it.
Same here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
And thank you for being responsive to the Q and A.
We want to be good partners.
Next item on the agenda is a continuing discussion for the center business. We possibly zoning. Adam, Adam, do we have, do we have anyone here for that? Sir, you want to, you want to introduce them? Hold on, one second.
Can I ask just a question about this particular thing? It would be good to know, since this is, I think, the first MBTA communities project, you know, from the zoning. It would be good to know how the process has changed and it's as of right. From, because one of the biggest things is, are the barriers, right? And so understanding what the differences after this process and how it's improved or delayed, you know what I'm saying? Just in general to, to see how we can streamline it for others to be able to do it in a way where the community can get the input and they, and if it's as of right, how, how it works better, I guess. I don't know. It's a guinea pig, right? The guinea pig of the.
I mean, your discretion is less, that's really.
The what?
Your discretion is less, but I think it's, I think, I think the timelines are similar so far. The timelines have been similar.
Yeah, because I think one of the ideas is that there is, that, that the zoning is set so that it's as of right. If they meet the as of right, then it's the community input and the specifics of that particular site. So how does that differ from our typical way of doing it? Because if that's a barrier, right?
The, the as of right by the timeline, but we're now technically, this is another thirty days past what they, right? Because it was like thirty-five days for comment, et cetera, for the site plan review.
Yeah, except that we, I think under the zoning, we gave ourselves six months to issue the decision. To do, to go through our process.
Okay, okay. Which maybe that's a, I mean, it's, I don't know.
It would just be interesting to analyze it later.
Yeah, because I know, I know a lot of people have said that.
Are we creating more barriers?
The length of the process was one of the things that was, that was a critical component of, of the effort.
And also the predictability, but this is predictable because it's an as of right.
Right. And this is, I think, a great project to base it on because they, it is as of right. But also making sure that we understand how the community input comes into it, you know, just kind of the process in general. How is, how does it differ and how, how can we improve it for the community and for development, right?
Okay, so on to the, that can Natasha.
I didn't mean to open it up again. I'm just, I'm just saying, I think we should.
No, it's, it's important to get the.
It's the whole point is to get feedback. We should analyze it at some point to see how it worked out.
Yeah, it's important to see how well it actually is following what, 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 what we thought was going to happen. So Adam, you're, there are some people here, I'll let you introduce them. And then we'll, then we'll start this, continue the, continue the meeting, but go ahead, Adam.
So one thing I'll ask for my colleagues, if we're going to chat, is to, you know, bring the microphones a little closer because I think it's been a little challenging for some in the audience at home to hear.
I can appreciate that because I listened to last week and I could tell the people that were talking up close.
The mic and the people that were far away.
It was the first time that I actually, you know, I'm usually here or listen, you know, we're complaining that I can't hear.
It is interesting when you're on, when you're on the other end.
But I had to like rewind a couple of things to make sure that I, I tested it out and you're totally right.
So we'll, so we'll be mindful of that going forward. And so, you know, I reached out to a number of businesses and I'm going to continue the effort. Tonight was a difficult night. There's a number of different programs happening. And some of the businesses that I spoke to were out of town and just impossible to, to come tonight. But I'll continue to make effort. So, but, but tonight, and we also want to do the same, by the way, for the mixed use one twenty-eight.
Yeah, absolutely.
So with us tonight, though, is Hillary, who is the owner of Tin Rabbit. And she's, you know, a business, a business owner, a business leader in town. She's had her shop here for many years. We'll let her tell us how many years she's had her business. You know, I'll, I'll note that, you know, in some conversations with some other business owners that I've spoken to. The small businesses in the center of town have been challenged by increased product prices. Partly as a result of, you know, of the pandemic and prices just don't typically go down. And we've all seen, you know, the cost of eggs, for instance, go up and that's true with the retail sector. And then in addition to that, you know, you know, the tariffs are having, you know, a further adverse impact on, especially on small business. And that impact, you know, you know, continually eats into margins. Taxes are not going down. Those costs get, you know, that pass down to, to tenants. So, you know, and, and so I think that this, so I think we, you know, we want to be mindful of the experience of small business in town. The goal for this thing, if we end up considering any zoning change, is to promote economic development that would ultimately help our small business in town by, you know, increasing, you know, you know, residential units, you know, in the center of town. So Hillary hasn't had a lot of background in what we've been talking about. So just for her benefit, I'll, I'll say, Hillary, that the, the planning board is looking currently at the existing zoning in the center business district, which would include your location on Chapel Street. And we're looking at it with a, with a view to further enable mixed use. There has been some mixed use activity at the property at fifty Detham Avenue, I think it is, as a result of a previous effort to modify the zoning in the center of town. But only one project materialized over a lot of years. And so now we're thinking about, you know, a further zoning change that would be, you know, that would, you know, do the same thing. It would allow for, you know, mixed use with maybe two or three, we have to figure it out. Stories above residential, above retail. And, and it just as a final comment, you know, any zoning that we, that we go through, we'll continue to go through a robust public process. We'll continue to have additional public meetings. If the planning board decides to proceed with the zoning change, it will have its own process and a public hearing. There may be a couple of public hearing sessions. So there'll be further opportunity for the public to participate formally and informally. And, and then in addition to that, you know, this is just, you know, a conversation to, to get a sense of whether or not, you know, increased residential units in the center of town could be a benefit. And what some of the, you know, impacts, positive and negative impacts you see to your business. So if I can already, I'd like to turn it over to Hillary.
Okay, actually, just, no, thank you, Adam. So Hillary, in addition to that, what Adam is commenting on, which, which is important, that is, I mean, any, any, any other thing you'd like to comment on that you feel would be a positive change that would help your business? So Hillary, why don't you unmute yourself and, you know, please, we'd love to hear from you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, that's just hard to hear, you guys. So, yeah, I've been in, on Chapel Street for seven years. And foot traffic is, tends to be a problem. So we welcome anything that will increase that for us. This unit that you're building is near Trader Joe's, correct?
So, so just to make a clarification, yes, that's true, but that has nothing to do with this zoning.
Okay, got it.
Right now, we're just talking about the, the center of town strip, Great Plain Ave, Great Plain Ave and Chapel Street and.
Maybe what would be helpful is just to say what the goal of the conversation is for her. I think you did before, but maybe restate it.
Well, well, I mean, I think the goal is to get her input as far as, you know, we're talking about, do we have a zoning change with dimensional changes with height?
Yeah, but she doesn't, I don't think she can tell us what that, I just.
No, I know, but we just want to hear what her comments, what her, I mean, the goal of this whole thing is to hear what the owners, developers.
But the comments are for what? Like, I, I, I think you need to be, we need to be more specific, like what, what are we?
So Hillary, I think, was just started to talk. So let's, I'd like to hear what she.
She thought it was a hundred West Street.
Yeah.
So she has the clarity.
Sorry, I chimed into the meeting and it was all about that. So I don't know much about the zoning and what issues you have.
So that, that's understandable. Sorry for, you know, for the, you know, any misunderstanding. So earlier we had a public hearing for an application for a hundred West Street, which came as a result of zoning through the MBTA Communities Act, which the town enacted earlier this year. And that's, and that's separate, but it will, you know, it will add roughly two hundred units, a little less, of new housing. You know, in, in the, in the heights at Avery Square. But tonight, the purpose of this section that we're talking about is really to understand, you know, if we were to increase the, if we were to make changes to the zoning in Needham Center that would allow for more residential units in the center of town, how would that impact you either negatively or positively?
Well, there is a big parking issue. That's one of the comments that a lot of people tell me when they come in, that they can't find parking. So I think the traffic would be a bigger increase and the parking is going to be a problem.
That's valid. I appreciate that.
How, how often do you think that is occurring for people that come, come to your store?
I mean, definitely not in the summer. It's way quieter, but as soon as September hits, it is a big uptick. And they're now talking about other stuff going on as far as reducing the roads on Great Plain Ave. So I don't know how that's going to affect everything in the long run.
That's a valid point. I think that, you know, we'd want to make sure that, you know, that this is planned properly, that takes into account. Justin, you like to refer to it as holistic planning, that takes into account other things that are happening in the town. And I think Hillary, that's, you know, that's an important point. Do you find that there's not enough capacity between ten AM and four PM for your customers as it is?
Um, yeah, I find that the traffic, I either get it at ten AM and then there's a big stall where no one comes in. And then maybe they come in later around three thirty-four. And the traffic on Chapel starts to back up around twelve thirty-one on that street.
And, and does, does that negatively impact the parking capacity? Because that's.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, I think it's hard to, for people to park, especially when there's cars behind them. And with the talk of the envisioned plan, they wanted to take the left turn off Chapel, which we're against. So you might want to sort of coordinate with the envision board about what their plans are.
Yeah, that's a very good point as well. That's helpful. Are there, are there other ways that, or other things that would be a benefit if there were, let's say anywhere from fifty to two hundred units that were built over a course of five years or so in the center of town?
Yeah, I mean, everyone I've employed in my store has been a Needham resident, so there's potential for employment for people that want to work in town, for sure. And increased foot traffic obviously is obviously helpful. I don't know what the income is of everyone. If it's mixed or, you know, retirees or what you're, who's going in there, I'm not sure.
So all of that would be subject to the market, except I would say that, you know, the town does have an inclusive zoning requirement. Which is to say that I think twelve and a half percent of the units have to be applicable for eighty percent area median income.
Yep.
So that would be, so there would be some mixed income, but it would otherwise be, you know, to the open market and marketed however, you know, the property owner saw fit.
What, what else can the town do to help you, Hillary, as far as?
I think, you know, I've told the town before, like events on the common, you know, more promotion of Needham is needed. You know, they've built a whole new town common and just, there's hardly any events that go on there to bring people downtown. You know, the harvest fair was at Greenfield and it wasn't on the town common, which it normally would be.
Hi, Hillary. This is Eric Reber. Thank you for joining us. Really appreciate your insights. Question I have is the current tenant mix within the center. You know, I work with a lot of retail companies in my day job and one thing I always hear is it's important to have the right tenant mix so that you generate foot traffic, that you have people visiting various businesses. And we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about how we have a lot of banks and, and maybe that's not necessarily the right tenant mix. What, what are the type of other like sort of co-tenants that you would think of in the center that would help generate foot traffic for businesses like you? And also what doesn't work?
Well, people do complain that there's a lot of banks, a lot of nail salons, a lot of hairdressers. I think more clothing stores. I think people are looking for, you know, people say Lululemon. I just don't know how that would work, but.
You probably heard my daughter say that, so.
Yeah, and look, if that's what people are looking for, you need to put it in. So, you know, you find a lot of people will go to Wellesley where they'll have like a Talbits and stuff like that. You know, Legacy Place does well because they have more commercial name brands. But I don't know if that's what Needham wants. You know, do you want it all like that? Or not Legacy Place?
I think what you're saying is that Wellesley Center brings a lot of people because of the chains that are there.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
A lot of housing right on that main street, but there is housing near it.
Yeah, so there's a lot of chains, the type of stores.
You want an eclectic mix, but you also want something that they're familiar with too.
Well, and I also want to, and here I don't want to put words in your mouth, I also would want to protect some of our independent, small, you know, self-owned Needham businesses. So it's going to be sort of a, a balance here. What about cafes or restaurants? Do those, are those generally helpful for retail business like such as yourself?
Yeah, I'm very lucky to have French press across the street. That draws in a lot of business. A lot of people come to the doctor's office and they come walking around or at the hospital is also a drawer for people waiting for, you know, people to have surgery. But yeah, people love to eat and so definitely cafes and restaurants would be very appealing.
Thank you.
A bookstore. There's no bookstore.
No, we used to have a nice bookstore in town, didn't we? Didn't we? We used to have a nice one.
Hopefully with increased, you know, if, if we're able to get fifty or a hundred or two hundred units in a few years, you know, that would increase the demand for that kind of more diverse retail. These are really helpful notes and I think will help inform us going forward. Do you have any other comments?
Uh, no, no, I hope it all works out.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thanks a lot.
And I'm glad you said somebody vents on the comment because I, I say that probably two or three times a month, talking to different, the select boards and when, when other events are going on, I say we need more of these events. Like we had the Shakespeare on the common the first couple of weeks of, in September. I don't know if that, I don't know if that helped you at all. I mean, that was happening at night. So I'm not sure. What impact did that have? That type of event at night, does that have any impact on you, an immediate obvious impact on your business?
A lot of the businesses close at five PM because they just feel the, the foot traffic's not there. Sometimes I'll stay open later, just every Thursday, you know, in definitely like October, November, December to encourage people if they need to shop later. But honestly, it gets deadsville after five thirty.
So the events in the center of town after five thirty will help the restaurants, but as far as your business, it'll, you know, they'll see the business and maybe look, you know, it would be nice if they come back, but it's, but you're not open. So the hope is that they come back to the town.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think the goal of having housing would be that people would be there all of the time, and when they would come home from work, they would, you know, great, so I think.
Yeah, and I think you'd find businesses would adjust to that.
Right, they would adjust to it, but, but, but the events, that's, I mean, that's not part of the zoning per se, unless, unless we're prohibiting it, right? So.
Yeah.
The issue is, is creating more foot traffic via zoning would probably be more housing because there's commercial space already.
Right.
Thank you, Hillary.
All right, no problem.
Is there anything else?
Uh, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Hillary, I appreciate you very much.
Have a good night, all right, bye.
Thank you very much, Hillary.
Yep.
Next thing is, we're going to go over some minutes, but I forgot to acknowledge that we received, related to 100 West Street, we received the email correspondence from Susan Herman, Glenn Mulno, and Kathleen Correll, so I forgot to acknowledge that earlier. So now we have the, we have the minutes to go over, we have minutes of August 12th, do we have any comments on minutes of August 12th?
Mr. Chair, I don't, but subject to any other comments from my colleagues, I move that we accept the minutes as presented in our packet for August 12th.
I would second that, subject to anyone else not having any objections.
I got to holster it.
So basically, we still allow comments, we just, we just, we're going to jump on it, okay. Any, any comments on that? We've had a motion in a second, any questions or comments?
Can we keep the meeting open?
Sure, we'll, we'll keep this open, we'll keep it open contingent upon.
Contingent upon the minutes.
Okay, so, so Eric.
Aye.
Natasha.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Justin.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next to the minutes of, ooh, September 2nd. Adam, you want to do the same thing?
Well, I just want to be clear, so it looks like the minutes from August the 2nd were modified as a result of the zoning change in Article 5 of Development Standards?
Did I say August 12th or August?
No, September 2nd, September 2nd. September, we've already approved August 12th, we're talking about September 2 now. And those minutes reflected changes, I think, to zoning in Newton, is that right? Am I missing something?
No, we included basically the legal notices.
Oh, that's what, okay, so, yes, Artie.
What would that, what would that be?
I move acceptance of a minutes of September 2, subject to any further comment from my colleagues.
Eric.
Aye.
Natasha.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Justin.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, minutes of, that brings us to any reports, any report from the Planning Director, anyone from, anyone from the Board of any, any, anything? I have something from the vision, vision meeting, but go ahead.
Um, in terms of the large house, we're moving forward on the fiscal impact study. And so we've had some, a number of meetings with the consultant, and we anticipate basically having, hopefully having the first presentation made to the large house study committee at their meeting on the 16th. We had, we had, we had some difficulty coordinating the data from MLS system with the town's assessor's data, but we feel we have the adequate, we have the database that we need, that we need to basically look at teardowns and reconstruction over a five-year timeline, linked with all the MLS data. Bill Paulson, who's a realtor on the group, has been very helpful in putting together at least a framework for the data, which has taken us longer than we thought it was, would take us to pull it together.
So there's a, so there's a way to, I know this because I have MLS.
Well, he has it too.
And so maybe, maybe he's done that, but the simple way to do that is, because what you're talking about, and there's a distinction between assessed value versus sale or marketing value and the actual sale value. And then there's also a distinction between, you know, the square footage that the town has versus what, you know, is recorded, you know, in MLS.
Right.
And sometimes brokers will gross up the square footage and say it's 6,500 or 7,200, including 1,500 square feet in the basement or, you know, and, and so there are ways to capture that, but it sounds like Bill has done that.
Bill, Bill has been working with the team to do that, so we, we hope to see the final data profiles being put together this week, and then the first piece of the analysis is all being run, we run it off of earlier databases that weren't quite complete.
Can they do a small, brief presentation to the Planning Board?
There will be, there is going to be a meeting scheduled with you, what date was that meeting? I can't remember when we.
Late November, early December?
No, we.
Don't, don't wait, give me a second.
Do we have?
Alex is looking up the date, we have it on the calendar for them to come in front of you after the fiscal piece is done.
And then, has there been any fallout from the discussion at the Pollard, about Pollard in terms of a zoning change?
No, I mean, they decided basically to, I think, to study all seven options is what, all the options are going to be, continue to be studied.
They are.
And I just sent you, I think, an invitation to a meeting, pardon me? Right, if you're, if you're interested in attending that one, I just, I just got that invitation today.
Yeah, Carol sent it to me.
A January town meeting.
No, I think, I think a January town meeting is going to happen.
Okay, got it, so we would still need to craft some sort of zoning.
Well, when the, when the, when the decision is made on which option we're going to do, whether it's going to be at the Pollard School or it's going to be at, you know, DeFazio, then what the zoning is, is that we have to move forward on will be developed.
And will Town Council prepare the zoning?
Yes, he and I, and, and we'll prepare it.
It's a small change, but yeah.
It's a pretty easy, I mean, it's a pretty simple change, it's just probably changes, changes of the table in terms of what you can do.
The vegetables.
And no, yeah, it's just dimensional changes.
It's more for Pollard than it is for, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the changes, I mean, the zoning, writing the zoning is pretty simple. And then the other thing is that the Stephen Palmer work is going to, is the first meeting is, is, yeah, is next Wednesday.
Select Board have their executive session tonight, right?
They have one tonight and one tomorrow.
They have an executive, I think, yeah, they think they're, they're talking price and all that, so they, it was all a private meeting, but yeah.
You, you were looking at me like I had some intel, I'm like, I don't know, you tell me.
I just looked at the agenda pack, agenda packet we had, just the one I gave, so I didn't know.
No, 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 I'm just kidding.
She's on, she's on the planning part.
I can barely handle, like, the, what I need to do for the planning board.
Planning piece of it.
Yeah, I'm in the plan.
So November 12th is the meeting where the working group of the large house is coming to the Planning Board to talk about the fiscal impact study, and I think to show you their final proposal. And then they're having a community meeting on November 18th, and then they're voting their final proposal on December 8th, and then they plan to come back to your, to you on December 16th to present the final recommendations as they voted the week prior.
So the, the community meeting after they present the final proposal to us is to hear feedback on their final proposal, and then?
Present the final proposal to the community.
Yep, and see, and, and hear comments on it too. And then make any adjustments if they want to make any adjustments before they vote the final. So it will be handed off to you guys.
No, I guess my question was more, it sounded like there's going to be a community meeting after they've already come up with a final proposal?
Yes, well, this is going to be their third community meeting.
Right, correct.
And so the plan is to bring to the community sort of where they landed. And share that and see what the feedback is.
Yeah, what the recommendation is, and how do people feel about the recommendation.
Okay. The Envision Needham Committee is going to have, actually, we haven't settled on a date exactly, but we're going to have another community meeting coming up in November, I believe. And it's going to be similar to what the Large House Review Committee did in our first meeting, where that is, we have a presentation of what our, what our plans are, what our thoughts are, we're going to break out into tables, then, and then the tables discussed, then we, then they write down a list of their several comments, and then they come, then we come back, the whole group comes back together. We, they, they read off their comments, then we have an open Q and A session like we did in the Large House Review Committee. So that's what our, that's what when the main meeting is going to be. They may also have an open-house style meeting at some point, but the, the main thing that I care about is we're having a big meeting like that, like we had. I remember when you first talked about that, I wasn't certain, you know, but it worked quite well.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it worked quite well, Lee.
Is that scheduled yet?
Uh, no, I don't think, we don't have a, we don't have an exact date yet for that one.
I would, just from the conversations that I've been having with businesses, I would strongly recommend having, I don't know how big that the Envision Board is, but, you know, reach out to, so, is it really?
Yeah.
So if everyone, if everyone spoke to four businesses to let them know that, you know, with the meeting and personally invite them, I know that, that, I know that these businesses appreciate that kind of proactive engagement, for sure.
There, there is a lot of still misinformation that's out there.
Yeah.
Was even said tonight. The, there are three plans, two of which do change the left-turn-only lane from Chapel on to GPA. There is one that, that I know a lot of members of the committee are endorsing, that does keep that left-hand turn lane intact. So it's just, there are special interests on both sides of everything that is just giving businesses incorrect information because it suits their side of an argument that they're trying to lobby, but nonetheless, there is, there is a lot of misinformation about it. So, you know, it's, it's just, you know, to be correct, there are three plans, one of which does preserve that left-hand lane, and there's other examples of a lot of misinformation.
So that's a great opportunity, you know, you know, to reach out, bring the businesses in, so the businesses get firsthand the correct information so they can be properly informed of what's going on.
I mean, if we, if we let it, if we let some entities have their thing, it would be going to the Select Board sometime in December, but I, a number of us think that's, that's rushed, and we need to slow it down a little bit and make sure that we, what we want for the plans, then want to make sure if we have some type of matrix of criteria, what's considered important, not important, that, and there was a matrix related to that, but that was only filled out by, I think, I think the architect or the, the architects and maybe someone from the town, and it wasn't, it wasn't filled out by the committee.
The committee did.
No, no, it wasn't, the committee looked at it, but the, no, the committee, the committee looked at it.
It was part of the.
The committee looked at it, but the committee didn't rank it, the committee didn't rank it. So that was a concern at this last meeting last night, that the committee wasn't, they weren't the ones ranking it. And so it really wasn't the, it wasn't from the committee, and so it isn't something that should be endorsed as being from the committee. So we still have discussions on that one, and then we're going to come back, I think, on maybe November 18th. Did you say there's something on November 18th?
Large House.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to be coming back.
So I have a question, is, Lee, are you involved with Envision at all, or? So this is independent from the Planning Board versus completely, like, we don't have, I know you're both involved, but are you involved through the Planning Board?
No.
Artie is.
Representatives from the Planning Board.
There's only one representative.
You're, you're represented from Transportation.
I represent, yeah, from the Mobility Planning and Coordinating Committee.
So have we ever?
No, TSC.
Like, for the large house, they came and they talked to us about it, have we ever had Envision come and talk to us?
No. No.
So shouldn't we get some, I mean.
I mean, honestly, that's kind of why you're, you have a representative?
Yeah.
Like, I, 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 I report back to the TSC.
No, no, I understand, but when I did it home, I, I reported back to the.
I would recommend, Artie, that, to Natasha's, I would recommend, thank you.
I think to Natasha, the reason they're not coming, that they don't see, I mean, there's not, you don't, you don't have a regulatory book into it. I mean, there's a, I, I mean, I agree with you, it's a planning project.
That was my que, my question, what, what would the Planning Boards?
Just for information.
Yes, for information, but I think the other ones were involved because zoning is coming out of it.
No, no, but it comes, it comes up at every pro, at every meeting here.
So why don't we do this?
Because the Envision.
So, so, so as Justin was saying, there were three plans that were given, essentially given to the committee several months ago, or a month and a half, whenever it was, a while ago, and it was essentially given to us. And the problem that a number of us, number of us have been having on the committee is that we haven't been taking votes. You know, we haven't been making motions, making seconds, taking votes on various things.
So who's running?
So, 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 hold on, so I, so I pressed that, I pressed that, I think, I pressed that, I pressed that a lot last night and maybe the meeting before, I pressed the fact that how we're, how we're actually holding the meetings. And so now we are actually going to be, now we are making motions, and we are making, we are having seconds, we are taking votes on these things. Because ultimately, that's what it's supposed to be about, the committee deciding what the committee is moving forward, because it hasn't, it hasn't been. That's, that's been one of my stickler, inscrable things that I have a problem with, it hasn't been that. It's been, here's, you know, here's, here's some information, here's the schedule that we're going to do, and the, and the committee's just supposed to just take it. That hasn't been voted on by the committee as far as our schedule, so we're going to be looking, the schedule as far as when it's moving forward. And so that's, so there's been, I've been pushing back against it as far as the committee has to decide when it's going to the Select Board, not, not someone else telling us when it's going to.
So from a governance perspective, and the reason why there's some ambiguity, the points that Artie is making up and others are trying to come, are trying to use the governance of a committee, this is not a committee, it is a working group. And it is a working group that is a subcommittee of the Select Board.
Okay, so the Select Board created a subcommittee.
A, a working group.
A working group.
Because it doesn't have the governance of a, it does have a chair and a vice chair, but there's not, like, there's, there, and it wasn't intended. A lot of working groups don't necessarily have the governance of a standard committee. Yes, correct, so that's the reason.
Now, who's the chair and the vice chair for that?
Him is the chair and technically I'm the vice chair, but I've missed two weeks.
I haven't seen you there.
I said I missed two weeks.
Tim who?
What, I've, I've been at every other meeting.
No, I mean, in person.
Tim who?
In person.
In the basement, yeah. I was across from you during the, the whole debacle between.
Couple of minutes ago.
Uh, Tim.
Donald?
No, 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 it's coming, it's coming to be Tim Bulger.
Yeah, yeah, Tim Bulger.
He is on the mobility, he's the Chair of the Mobility, Mobility Planning Coordination Committee.
Well, it's still, I mean, it's still, the working group still has to decide what the working group is doing.
So, but, but, but the, but the official vote of this, or, you know, the, the governance of a committee doesn't apply to it, and we're, and I think that's some of the frustration, because, and, and so now there is this move to try to apply a standard governance of a committee, which I don't necessarily agree with, but it is, that's, that's what.
Because it wasn't created with the authority.
It wasn't created with the, with the actual authority.
Well, the opposite is that the people in the, there is, are being told what's going to happen.
Yes.
But, but, so, I, I.
But that, but that, but that, that means that the people who are there are just, they're there just for show, means they're there for show.
Let's time out, because this is kind of getting beyond us.
Yeah.
What I would recommend, though, to Natasha's point, which is a, a good point, why don't we invite the Chair of, you know, of Envision to come and talk to us for, you know, for 15 or 20 minutes, that's it?
This is where we are, and that's the main thing to do, we're just a working group or whatever.
But it's also an opportunity, I think, for us to provide some feedback. And I would, and I would hope that they would also do the same and go in front of the, the Council of Economic Advisers as well, that, you know, that is a committee in town that focuses solely on understanding, you know. Is Heidi on, on the Envision?
No.
She's the Chair of the CEA right now, anyways, so I think that, I, so at, at least it would be helpful for us to provide some feedback as a board to some of the comments we're hearing from, you know, the business community and from residents about parking, which should, which should be considered based on the information that we're going to get from this study and should include the recommendations, otherwise, this is piecemeal planning that is disintegrated or that is decentralized and, and not smart.
I would reckon, I would also add to that not only Tim, but Kevin Keen, who is the Select Board representative, being the fact that this is a Select Board project. And, you know, it's, and, and they need to know and, and, you know, what the, the progress, and I, and I think they have a reporting structure, Kevin, there is a whole.
We're back to the Select Board, sure.
I think that's what's confusing about it, because we have, normally, when you have, when you have members from different boards, there's usually some kind of a governance and, and path to where we're going, when you have, it's just kind of like a hybrid, right?
It's like the Quiet Zone working, when it comes down to it, this is, it's Town Manager and the, and Mary Anne, the Select Board, that's the ones who are going to make the decisions on this to the Select Board. We're, like, the decisions of, of, like, there, there's nothing that this, this Envision is going to, I mean, they're, they're going to say that, this is what we finally select, or we finally, we like for this reason, but it really comes down to the Select Board then gets in front of the public again.
Absolutely.
And then, and then, and then they're the ones who actually are going to make the five votes that are going to go forward with saying, hey, Town Meeting, we need X amount of dollars for, you know, design and construction of all of this. So when it comes down to it, this is going to be a warrant article, combined with some grant funding, but that's driven by the Select Board. Just like the working group for the Quiet Zone, this is a working group for Envision.
My, my goal, my goal is I hadn't been able to go to the early, early meetings. My, my goal, um, my goal is I hadn't been able to go to the early, early meetings in Invision because of other stuff going on. So I didn't, I didn't even go. But earlier on, I made, I mean, way earlier, we'd been meeting, as you know, made comments, go to the public. And then, then this, then, you know, April, May hit the fan, stuff hit the fan, because it wasn't, it wasn't being done properly as far as being vetted, talking to the public. My goal is making damn certain that the public knows everything that's going on, the public, the public is involved, the businesses are involved. The businesses not only just feel, the businesses actually have a say what's going to be, what's going on in that, in those meetings. Now ultimately, as you're saying, the select board is gonna be the ones that ultimately decide what's gonna happen and does it, will it work, will it not work, when they go forth, whatever one they choose. But in the, in the, in these meetings, it ha, they ha, that has to matter. If the people there don't matter, we'll wind up with the same thing that happened in April. And I don't want that to happen. So that's why I'm pushing what's going on. Let's get, we'll get Tim in here, we'll get Tim in here. We can get Kevin in here, Tim in here.
I just wanna, one other thing in general is, I, it would be great to understand from the select board which planning projects they do and which planning projects we do, right? Because it sounds like this is a planning project.
Well, last time, last time we, planning was involved.
But it was still a DBW project.
It was still done by DBW, but there was a committee that, that was created. I sat on that committee. Um, and it, it did the planning that led to the common renovation and the renovations that happened along Chapel Street.
Right, so I guess.
There was a consultant that was hired and we, there was, you know, street skate plans that were developed, transportation, lighting, lighting improvements, all that was.
Hold on, where the, hold on, hold on.
Well, but it's related.
Were there, yeah, were there any zoning changes required?
No, there were no zoning changes required. It was really.
I guess, no, that's, I'm sorry. I'm not sorry. I guess that the thing is, Adam's been trying to spearhead this, this thing about the town center. And this is a key component of how it's, it affects it. So I'm just confused as to what our purview is versus what.
This is the art, this is one of the problems with the decentralized government that we have. We have, we have three.
There's lack of coordination.
We have, it's, it's a lack of coordination. We have the school committee that gets their powers from the state. We have the planning board that gets their powers from the state. And we have the select board that gets the powers from the state. And we don't necessarily, we, we, we don't necessarily all work together in a holistic way. And so that's why these working groups are formulated. But the thing is, yes, we need to make time every meeting to have Artie and you have me on there as well because I've, because I'm part of another committee. But, you know, needs to then, you know, that's why these stakeholders are there. They're supposed to inform the board of the progress of this meeting going forward. So let's not, let's do a standing meeting for a standing portion like we kind of do on Invision and what's going on after we meet with Tim and after we meet with Kevin so that we have a better idea to help us in our work that, that Adam is trying to spearhead to come up with some possible zoning changes. Because you're right, but that's, that's really the, an artifact of the way that our government works.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I, I mean, I sit on the other side of the table most of the time, right? So I can tell you from my perspective, you can try to go around and do a working committee, but in the end, you're gonna spend twice or three times as long as if you did it in the proper way.
Yeah, timeout. This is under the authority of a different body, the select board. Let's, you know, we have, Marty's gonna make a recommendation that Kevin and the chair.
Understood.
Come before us. That, that's that. Let's move on to any other reports from our colleagues on our other boards.
But I think the only reason I bring it up is because if we're overarching, trying to make policy in different areas and there are different projects that are going on that are going through different governancees, we should take that into account.
Yeah, that's why we're having.
Hundred percent.
Agreed.
Or we're gonna waste our time.
We're on the same page. Any other reports from other?
Yeah, yeah, any other reports?
I think Alex, I mean, he wants to talk to everybody about schedule.
Yeah, but were there any other reports?
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have any others.
We're reporting, we reported, uh, because we do wanna do those reports. Why it's on the agenda. So we are moving our previously scheduled November 4th meeting to November 12th. I'm gonna change your calendar invite, but that is definitely.
That's what you asked about, yeah, okay.
That is what I asked about, yes. I am having trouble scheduling the second November meeting because I have to use November 18th for the community meeting for a large house. Um, so I know, I think that Justin, Artie and Eric were able to do November 25th. Natasha wasn't. And it is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So it's not right.
I'm not traveling, so that's fine.
I mean, I can, I can meet them.
I mean, if everyone can meet, I can watch it after or something to that. Yeah, if I have four, I'm, I'm. Just that time of the year is really.
Yeah.
It's really hard and there's so many things going on. And I have all the other meetings with the Steven Palmer too. So I can only do so much, yeah. So that is one option. The other option is trying to meet on like November 19th, which is a Wednesday. If there's a meeting on the 18th.
Yeah, yeah.
November 18th, we have a meeting.
No, that's the one I'm taking away.
That's the large house.
Cancel that, move that.
Oh, because that one doesn't.
The 18th gets canceled. I've never.
The 18th is going to be the large house committed, community meeting.
Yeah.
So we would not have a plan.
So the 19th I can do, November 19th.
Yeah, yeah.
I could, right now I could do it.
It's fair than doing a busy week, I think. Have that busy week and then not have it. Yeah.
You said November 19th, is that what you said?
I did.
My wife will love me. I have to get a, I have to get a studio on 100 West, so we need to get that built. She kicks me out.
Say what?
When you start leaving Invision, is that what you're saying? So wait, did I, I just, I didn't quite grasp it. Is November 19th okay?
Yes.
Okay, so just so you guys know, it is the week following the 12th. So if there isn't something that we need to meet, maybe we'll cancel it. But it's nice to have two meetings a month for when we need it.
Yes.
Maybe we'll do some of your stuff. Um, and then just while I'm here, we have no issues that we see with December 2nd and 16th, right? We're gonna just.
I think we're fine.
I can't do December 2nd.
Oh, okay.
I can do the 9th. I can do the 16th.
Do we have, um, do we have any projects that you anticipate coming before us then?
That's, that's probably gonna be the warrant for January, right?
Hmm.
Early in December.
Yeah, I mean, we.